Mayor Owens, are you present?
Present.
Yes, sir. Mayor Potem Selby. Commissioner Mann. Commissioner Boerland.
Present.
Commissioner Burke.
Present.
Commissioner Walker. And Commissioner Collins.
Hello.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have four members present, so therefore you have a quorum.
All right. Well, let's, uh, we'll open the meeting up with a moment of silent meditation if we can. All right, let's have the pledge of allegiance. Start right, James.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, in the republic.
To the republic which stands, a nation.
One nation, one God.
All right, that's, that's good enough. That's poor rendition, but as good as we can do. All right, we've got to have adoption of agenda. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm moved to adopt the agenda as presented. It's Commissioner Boerland.
All right, is it second?
Uh, Commissioner Burke, second.
All right, the motion, uh, to adopt the agenda with a second, call to roll.
Thank you, sir. Um, let's see. On this floor with the folks present, um, we'll go to Commissioner Boerland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
All right, we have, uh, a majority. Uh, we'll do the adoption of the agenda. I guess we both want to do the consent agenda now. James, right?
Yes, sir. Consent agenda. We've got four items on it, and this is for action.
All right, uh, can we have a motion?
This is our motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, is it second?
I'll second. Commissioner Boerland.
All right, motion by Darrell, second by Jason, that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, take a roll, James.
Thank you, sir. Um, in terms of this, we'll go to Commissioner Boerland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
You have a unanimous vote from the members, um, from the commissioners present.
Okay, let's move on.
Thank you, sir. Item number five on the agenda. This is presentation's report. This is for information. Item number eight, item number five A was proposed to be a presentation on transitional housing. This was to be presented by Dare Minority Coalition Executive Director George Carver. Although Mr. Carver did send over materials, perhaps he is delayed because he's not present in the, in the meeting room at this point. Or, he, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, we may ask for a brief pause. Our, um, the first, the first person on the presentations, Mr. George Carver, the executive director of the Dare Minority Coalition, is here and is available to make his presentation on transitional housing.
Okay, let him start off. Is he up to this, uh, however he wants to do it, whatever he wants to do is fine. George?
Good afternoon.
Oh, there you are. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm George Carver, the executive director of Dare Minority Coalition. And I actually want to talk about transitional housing. Um, I want to be very clear about the definitions and phaser, um, phaser and the, actually, um, the importance of the terms that will be used. It's not essential housing or low-income housing. Like I, like I said, this is transitional housing. Uh, most important services will be priorities. That's finding appropriate housing and the priority for, for our case managers. The follow-up including linkage to community-based supportive services to help the families maintain houses in the primary focus after housing is attained. The case manager goal is to monitor the family's progress and to link families with primary support services and systems, not to act as a primary support. And B, service levels and coordination. Case managers are the primary case managers and advocates for all issues pertaining to permanent housing. Clients would be assisted to determine proper housing needs and provide the list of appropriate housing options with case managers acting as advocates when needed. Assistance to obtain needed documentation, appointments with other community agencies, and financial assistance would be provided. Families must keep case managers informed on their goals. Example, if these clients wanted to move after attaining certain financial support from the county or from us, I'm saying they should let the caseworkers know ahead of time, and they're primary goals. D, um, the credit and financial planning. For example, PNC could be the financial institute who will be assisting in this matter. They assist in money management classes, um, through our connections with the housing counseling, with the hotline, so to speak. And they would be having accounts set up for these individual families to maintain their essential goals far as having different, and their financial setups. So when they are attain new housing, they'd be in a position to actually attain new housing through PNC and with the support of our case management. Legal assistance and linkage. Um, case managers are also asked, access family legal needs, advocates for resolutions of legal problems, and making appropriate referrals. And as you can see up here, this is an example of some of the, of one of the houses that I was looking to use for transitional housing. Um, the top floor, I believe, is the three bedrooms and the bottom floor is, um, two bedrooms. Um, as you can see, the square footage of these properties, they are decent-sized houses. They kind of look similar to those 15-bedroom condos on the beach road in, um, Kildover Hills and Kitty Hawk. But these were be like a smart, uh, smaller units, um, placing, let's say, like an acre, and you'd be able to, should be able to fit like six of these. I would say five, so you can have like some type of grounding and support. But the main thing about the transition housing is, um, going through our program, partnering with the hotline. They will actually be in our program from 18 months to two years max. And this would actually give them enough time to build their credit, to actually find the actually, um, financial support they need to actually buy their own homes and be supported through that way. And also Dare Minority Coalition, we have, um, we are partner, or we actually have our branch office. It's called PC Real Estate Firm. It's like RE/MAX and Century 21, but it's a nonprofit. Um, it's the largest, if not the only nonprofit, that deals with real estate. That will include, um, attaining the foreclosed homes and also HUD homes. So we're not actually looking for building a large acreage to actually do multiple developments where you can actually use foreclosed homes to actually put these individuals that's going through our program in these homes. And being that PC Real Estate is a nonprofit, we're able to get these properties, um, not as much as anybody else has actually been it on them, because we'd be partnering with the federal government far as like getting these homes. And, uh, PC Real Estate is, now, when I started, um, the branch office here, um, and like I said, where's, where Dare Minority Coalition main office is located, um, we was at 12 locations throughout the states, throughout the country. Now we up to 18 different locations and our, um, headquarters is actually in Charlotte. So we, like, we're located in New York, Texas, California, um, Atlanta, Tennessee. So like I said, it's 18 different states. And I just want to, um, let the town know that we are willing to work with them if they have any, you say, property that could be used for these transitional houses that could be built. Um, we'll be responsible for attaining, um, experienced engineers to actually get the, the job done. And just like you can see here, we will keep y'all updated if agreed upon on any property that can be used for us transitioning housing. And also, transitional housing and being a community developments corporation, we are willing to work with individuals throughout the community that has abandoned houses, that needs a little upkeep, and if they're willing to give us access to their properties. These houses not big enough, that would take up all the property is big enough to actually, it looks like a normal home, but it's actually five bedrooms that can be accessed on their properties. So, and, and after, let's say, 15, X amount of years, this property or this development would actually be the landowners, because we're not looking for no titles. So after the house is paid for, or the development is paid for through, we call it tenants vouchers, which we'll be getting from the state. And as soon as it's applied for, uh, with our transitional housing, um, it's paid for up until the development is actually paid for itself. That's either the transitional stage between families moving in and out. So there's no lapse in non-payment. It's always going to be, um, taken care of far as like dealing with the state. And I passed out some other incentives we'll be working with also for our transitional housing is, um, MHS is working on re-entry, uh, working with the recovery court. So it's not, it's like we have a, we don't have a lack of, uh, participants or clients, so to speak. So, um, like I said, working with the financial institute, then also the hotline, the recovery courts, and also educating individuals of the importance of finances is, is very crucial in this transitional stage. So once they go through the stage of learning, let me say, how to manage their money and, um, the, the importance of the build of credit, they can move on and purchase their homes through our programs. And we will have experienced individuals, like I said, through the hotline, um, or financial institutes, and also the recovery courts in these matters. Is there any questions, anyone?
Hey, hey. Hey, commissioners, have any comments?
Yeah, this is, uh, Commissioner Boerland. First of all, I mean, you're doing good work in the community, and that's much appreciated, and, uh, I hope you continue what you're doing. I, I think I need a little clarification on, uh, exact ask, or, you know, I mean, we, we talked about, um, and we don't really need to beat around the bush. We, there's certain properties, you know, that, that could be used for this, like the one we just annexed, right, that we don't know what we're going to do with, or, or other properties. But what would be the, uh, where would, where does funding come from to, um, do you have access to grants, or you, in terms of building the actual?
The act is saying, once we, um, actually acquire the property that's going to be used, um, the grants, um, will be attained through, um, state's, um, means, and being that we are a CDC and partner with a much experienced, um, PC real estate firm, we have the leverage, and also hotline has been as one of our council managers that would be, um, dealing with, um, the clients on this on a hand-to-hand basis. So that will come from, like I said, the state and, um, I want to, I don't want to say federal level, because I was trying to keep it local, like state level. So as, I think it's enough funds in, um, North Carolina to actually get this done. We're not looking at like, um, anywhere from like 20, we're not looking for 20 million dollars, like types of grants like that, but anywhere from like at least up to upwards of like 2 million to actually have, let's say, like an acre, um, developed with like six of these developments.
Do you need the, um, I mean, is it, are you able to get those kind of grants or access to those funds before having property committed?
That, um, I'm saying, I would say no. I mean, it depends on, because when you apply for these grants, they want to know the, um, being the finance, you know, I'm saying, they want all the details on the budget and what's going to be approved for it. If they don't want to, say, if you're not going to them with, okay, I'm spending $500,000 on this property, they want to know, is the property attained and where it's going to be? If I don't have access to these properties, I can't put it in, in the budget and apply for the grant appropriately. So I wouldn't put our organization in, in that predicament, to start something that can't be finished.
Hey, George, this is Commissioner Collins. Uh, do you have any properties right, at, right now?
Say that again, Mr. Collins, I'm sorry.
Do you have any properties that you're working with right now?
Um, I have been in contact with a few, um, individuals, um, definitely around the Haysore area, that would like their property that they're actually using or not using to be evaluated. And to actually, to show example of how these homes could be done, um, I actually, I'm in a position now using my personal property, which is no longer will be my personal property, be the property of Dare Minority Coalition, to actually put up three of these homes.
I appreciate everything you do, man.
No problem, Mr. Collins, thank you.
All right, any other questions, uh, George? All right, George, thank you so much for coming. And George, I will say this is awfully awkward because of this COVID-19. We should all have been there, but I'm purposely staying home to stay out of this mess that's going on, and I guess other commissioners are too. So thank you for your presentation, and we will bring it up at a later date, I can assure you that.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me.
All right, uh, James?
Yes, sir.
Update on town sponsored events?
Yes, sir. Uh, it's item number, number five B on the agenda for information. Um, in this particular case, we wanted to finalize some details of activities that we had, uh, shared with the board at the prior meeting. And of course, we are, we would be excited to, um, bring on additional, additional feedback and ideas from what may be a soon-to-be-appointed special events committee. In the meantime, though, uh, we're working with the team that was noted last time, we have a, several baskets of activities. So let's take, let's, we're trying to do a mix of the old and the new, and again, we're trying to promote holiday spirit here in the town of Manio. So let's start with a, a basket of activities related to businesses. And the first one is a longstanding tradition here in the town. This is the business wreath contest. In fact, this activity is already underway. This has traditionally been coordinated by the Roanoke Island Garden Club. Um, in fact, businesses were contacted by the club the first week of November and hand-delivering the wreaths that had been obtained by the town, either the ones we had in prior years or new ones to replace some of the older ones. Um, so the businesses who choose to participate, they will decorate the wreaths, and there's no particular theme. It's whatever their creativity will allow. And they are to deliver them to town hall no later than Monday, November 30th, from 10:00 to 3:00. Then the wreaths will be judged, just like they have been in prior years on that day, and winners would be announced that afternoon. Now, the four winning wreaths will be hung in, in key locations in the town, in the traditional ones, two at the entrance to the Christmas tree parking lot, and two on either side of the old courthouse, the Dare County Arts Council Building. Now there will be some, some video. We've got a, a special, a special host, uh, host is planned for the, uh, the actual videoing of the winners and, and providing, uh, providing good information on them, and we'll give an information about the wreaths. Also, the rest of the wreaths will be placed in special places throughout town by town staff, and the names of all participating businesses and locations will be published in the Coastland Times as a parade of wreaths. Now, the wreaths will be removed first week of January, but this is one of the very first things that kicks off the season, uh, along with so many decorations around town. Um, in fact, as we discussed by the board last time, we are increasing the decorations around town, east, west, uh, all, all over the place, and I think folks will, will see a nice increase in that. The second item in the business category is the business decoration contest, and our, our, the thought for this is called Making Storefronts Bright. Now, in this particular case, uh, we will draw three random winners of a $100 gift card, one per winner. And this is, was being used as a way to encourage people to visit local businesses, to see the decorated storefronts, and shop local while they're here. Of course, it builds community holiday spirit, and the decorated storefronts will need to be complete by the end of the business day on Friday, December 4th, with winners announced on Monday, the 7th. We'll also post photos and videos of storefronts on the town website, social media, and other ways to promote these, all of these businesses all around town. So those are a couple of activities, old and new, for the business community. But of course, our residents here, it's so important to find ways to, to keep some traditions alive, and in some cases, um, make use of the family traditions and share them with other families and people around town. So the first, the first contest is called Deck the Homes. This is a home decoration contest, and again, we will draw three random winners for $100 gift cards. Now, these decorations can be inside or outside of the home. Some examples would include tree lighting, or advent wreath lighting, menorah lighting, outside decorations, and other, other symbols of community and holiday spirit. So whether someone, you know, decorates with, with one bulb or one wreath or an entire, entire tree, they're all eligible to participate in this. Um, they will actually send a photo of their, of their Deck the Homes entry to the town of Manio, info@manionc.gov by the end of the day on Friday, December 11th. Three random winners will be drawn with their $100 gift cards on the 14th, and their photo submissions will be used on the town website and social media. Of course, we'll also post them periodically throughout the season to let folks see all the different traditions of families and folks throughout the town. Now, we're not just going to do pictures, though. There's another category called Manio Merriment. And in this case, we're looking for performances and entertainment. And some examples would be just, a family could be, you know, uh, sing along, sing along around the, the piano. Or in the past, we've seen, you know, we've seen folks doing, uh, dance, dances from The Nutcracker and other things. Uh, if there are choirs now, instrumentals, families sing along, caroling, what, whatever it might be, just ways to express that community and holiday spirit. And we'll ask folks to take a video of this, whether it's with their, with their, their phone, or their camera, or whatever, and send those submissions to the town of Manio at the same time, that Friday, December 11th. We'll have three people drawn at random and announce on Monday, the 14th, those winners. And of course, we'll use these to post on the town website, social media. And we really love the idea of this, so people can share their holiday traditions with other folks around town. And, uh, at the end of this, we hope to have a nice video, uh, video montage put together so we can, we can memorialize this long-term. Now, last but not least, we don't want to forget other, other activities, so we're going to call this category Food and Festivities. And we're going to kick off with a holiday food drive. Now, this holiday food drive is going to be coordinated and led by Manio Police Department and town staff. Uh, we'll be, uh, working with, uh, the, the local food pantries right here in Manio, and Magnolia Pavilion will be the headquarters and the drop-off site. Now, of course, dates and times will be arranged. We'll make sure to get that well-publicized out in the community. Interestingly enough, our location at Magnolia Pavilion, we hope to, to continue to draw people to see the things going on in town, because our second activity under Food and Festivities is called Letters to Santa. So we're obtaining a mailbox that'll be located just across the street from Magnolia Pavilion, at the Christmas tree lot downtown. And we'll have this mailbox there, and we'll encourage people to come downtown, take a photo, tour the decorated storefronts, look at all the wreaths and decorations, and shop local while they're there. Further, we will have letter, letters from the kids pulled out at random by, by Santa, and Santa will read them aloud on video. We'll make sure to post those, so the kids can hear their words read aloud by Santa Claus. And, uh, um, we, we want to make sure, though, we also, and, and, and this, the kids aren't just sending a letter to Santa, they'll get a chance to see it, because Santa Claus is coming to town. Our next step is to make sure that on the, oh, on the days that we had done some of the activities before, Santa Claus will be riding on the Roanoke Island Volunteer Fire Department fire truck through desert, through the neighborhoods throughout the community on Friday evening and Saturday morning. In fact, he will use his magic to turn all the lights at the Christmas tree downtown, and the lights at Cartwright Park and the P. Island Cookhouse. We wanted to make sure that, that every neighborhood had an opportunity to see Santa, and we'll have Christmas music playing, so they can see, they can see Santa, Santa, or hear Santa coming, uh, and then, and then have the opportunity to, uh, to participate in his merriment and his magic there. So these are the activities that we know we can pull off. These are the activities that we want to help bring to the town. And of, and of course, we would look forward to, uh, working with our special events committee, not only make this year's, this year's holiday work, but also look to the future and make sure we can continue these, continue these traditions and more.
Any comments of James?
That's great, James. Remember, a long time ago, Santa Claus used to ride around on the fire truck, come down, everybody looked forward to that.
Yeah, it did. All right, any other comments? All right, uh, James, just keep moving forward on this, I guess. Uh, you got to sign me like that full approval of the board, do what you want to, so that's good. All right, go in, uh, public hearing, James.
Thank you, sir. Um, item number six A on the agenda. This is the zoning text amendment 2020-07Z to regulate boat lifts. Now, this item had, the board had made, had directed the planning and zoning, planning and zoning board to come up with additional regulations on boat lifts, and of course, the language had been prepared. Now, I would like to let the members of the public understand, tonight, there will be a public hearing, but the board will not vote on this matter until two, until two weeks. That would be on November 18th at the 5:00 workshop meeting. So tonight, it's to hear from the public in terms of the public hearing, uh, and hear what they have to say. Uh, because it is a public hearing, we'll open and close. We will take, we will need a motion second and, and a vote to both open and close the session.
All right, can we have a motion to open the, uh, comments or, uh, hearing, uh, the people from the, uh, boat lift situation? Uh, can we get a motion?
I move to open the public hearing on regulation of boat lifts.
All right, is there a second?
This is Richie, I'll second.
All right, motion by Jason, second by Richie, that we open a public hearing on, uh, regulation of boat lifts. All right, James, go ahead and handle it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll, and we'll do the roll call to go ahead and open the public hearing based on.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yes, sir. Um, Commissioner Boerland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Okay. Um, if it's all right, I'm going to go ahead and interject.
Hey, hey, this is Commissioner, Commissioner Selby, I'm on the line.
Exactly. I, I understood that Mayor Potem Selby had joined us for, for the record, so, um, we'll go ahead and, and, and join Mayor Potem Selby in the roll call vote to open the public hearing. Mayor Potem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, your, your public hearing is open. Um, what I'll do, if it's all right, um, I'm looking at the audience, and I don't see anybody, uh, anybody from the public here in the audience, so I'll go ahead and turn around the computer screen, and if anybody would like to public, publicly comment at, at this hearing time, hit star nine on your phone, and your hand will be raised on the screen. So we'll look around to see if anybody's raised their hand for the public hearing. Okay, so as we look up at the screen, we only have three attendees here tonight. So if anybody would like to make a, uh, comment at the public hearing for the regulation of boat lifts, please hit star nine on your phone, and your hand will be raised. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we do not seem to have any hands ready to comment on this public hearing.
All right, now, we, we have to close this hearing, don't we?
Yes, sir. So this would require a motion second and a vote to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Yeah, can we have a motion to close the public hearing on, uh, regulation of boat lifts?
This is Darrell, I, uh, motion to close the public hearing on regulation of boat lift.
All right, is there a second?
All right, Mr. Mayor, by, you, you, we've got a motion that I have Commissioner Collins.
Who seconded, who seconded it? I didn't hear him.
Uh, Commissioner Burke, sir.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Rich. Uh, all right, go ahead, James.
Yes, sir. Uh, I will call vote to close the public hearing. Uh, Mayor Potem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Boerland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you've got a unanimous, unanimous question, Ms. Schuster?
All right.
Mr. Ayers. You, you mentioned to the public that the vote wouldn't be until the next meeting. Do you also want to remind them that they can submit public comment for another 24 hours as well?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, uh, Town Attorney Ben Gallup has, uh, wanted us to remind the public the re, the reason the vote's not told the next meeting, as we've done in prior sessions, is the recent session law by the state of North Carolina requires us to give an additional 24 hours should anyone choose to comment in, um, uh, comment in written form within 24 hours of this meeting. Uh, anybody in the public who would like to make such a comment, please send your email to the town manager. That email address is jayairs, that's J-A-Y-E-R-S at manionc.gov. We look forward to anybody who may choose to submit initial, initial comments, and also those comments then would be provided to the mayor and board of commissioners, uh, prior to their next meeting.
All right, you made it very clear. All right, let's go on to B.
Yes, sir. Item 6B, this is the zoning text amendment 2020-08Z to update provisions applicable to college, university, and community college campuses. We do have, uh, uh, this is an, an additional one. We do have, this is an additional one, where we have the opportunity here to hear from the public. This also will not be voted on until November 18th, to allow time for the additional comment. We do have up on the screen a couple of elevations of the proposed building, academic building, at the new COA campus here in the town of Manio. Now, I understand, though, even though that's a specific example of a potential building, this particular regulation applies to all college, university, and community college campuses that may locate within town limits. So tonight, the only action would be to hold the public hearing, and to hear the public on that, it would require a motion second and a vote to open the public hearing.
All right, we'll declare the update for the provisions for the hearing for community colleges and campuses. James, take a roll call.
Yes, sir.
Did anybody make the motion?
This is Commissioner Collins, I'll make the motion to open the public hearing for colleges, universities, and community colleges.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, who is, Rich?
Jason.
Jason, okay, I'm sorry, I can't. All right, we've got a motion to open a public hearing on college, university, and community college, seconded by Jason. All right.
We'll go ahead and do the roll call. Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, IRNA. Let me go back again. Commissioner Borland, IRNA.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, IRNA. And Commissioner Collins, IRNA.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Mayor, motion's unanimous to open the public hearing.
All right, let's open the public hearing. Go ahead, James.
Yes, sir. The meeting room is still devoid of folks here, however, I'll look up on the screen to see what attendees we have here. For any attendee who would like to make a comment at the public hearing, please hit star nine on your phone, and that will raise your hand, and we'll look on the screen and see if anybody, any of the attendees are doing so. All right, we have three attendees on the line here, however, nobody has raised their hand yet. I will certainly want to make sure, reinforce, if you want to speak, hit star nine on your Mr. Mayor, we don't seem to have anybody raising their hand to make a comment at the public hearing, sir.
All right, we got to have a motion to close the public hearing in regards to the college, community college campuses. Can we have a motion?
This is Betty, I make a motion that we close public hearing for community college.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second. This is...
All right, Jason, I got you. Motion by Betty, seconded by Jason, and we close the public hearing on college, university, and community campuses. Take a roll call.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, IRNA.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, IRNA.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you've got a unanimous vote to close.
All right, we'll declare the zoning text for the community colleges closed. Public comment, James?
Yes, sir, and to reinforce the previous comments, so the public, as the public is listening, this also has the option for anybody in the public to submit their written comments on the zoning text amendment to the town manager within 24 hours of the meeting, and again, that's jayairs, J-A-Y-E-R-S, at manionc.gov.
All right, go ahead, James.
Yes, sir. Item number 7A...
I have a comment.
Yes, sir. And this is for information, if it's all, I'll go ahead and read the instructions for our listening audience. Members of the public are invited to address the board of commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole, and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and location, so that your statements can be recorded.
All right, James, open it up.
Yes, sir. We do not have anybody in the general public in the audience, I'll turn around to the board here, and it looks like we may have additional attendees now. So we are up to four attendees, and any of the attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, that would be star nine on your phone, so if you hit star nine, it will raise your hand, and we will call you out for an opportunity to speak. Members of the public, if anybody would like to speak, you hit star nine on your phone, and we'll look for your hand raised.
All right, James, go ahead.
If you'd like me to proceed with the agenda, we'll move on to...
Yeah, go ahead, I thought somebody was getting ready to comment, but they didn't. Go ahead, James.
Okay, item number eight, this is new business, these items are for action. 8A, this is the Deer County Arts Council Cultural Affairs Funding. In this particular example, at the prior board meeting, there was a presentation made by Executive Director Chris Sowen regarding the possibility of changing the first Friday funding, and changing it over to the sponsorship of the courthouse sessions. Now, as indicated in the staff report available to the public and to the members of the board, there are some options to make that happen. One of the ways is simply for the board to say, yes, you can use that money for the courthouse sessions. A second way, that, because in the comments of the board, there was a discussion of giving the Arts Council flexibility to program their stuff, an alternate method was called out, a second scenario, or scenario two, was called out, in which we simply move it to the DCAC events line item, and they can program their available funds as they see fit in support of the town of Manio. Now, in addition to that issue that was the original ask of the DCAC at the last meeting, there's also a third item, and this came up as part of the commissioner's comments, and one of those, one member suggested raising the Arts Council allocation from its current level up to $10,000. So in that particular case, that sources for that additional funding were identified in the staff report within the cultural affairs segment of the budget, so there is available funding should the board decide to do that.
All right, can we have any commissioners' comments, or feelings, or how you, where we want to go with this?
Can you refresh my memory? How much money were we talking that they currently have, and how much are we talking about increasing it to?
Yes, Mayor Protem Selby, the current allocation, their three line items total $7,400 in their current funding appropriation.
And what are we asking to increase it to?
There was, yes, Mayor Protem Selby, there was a suggestion by a member of the board to increase that to $10,000. So that'd be a $2,600 total increase on their funding.
And where did you say the $2,600 can come from?
Yes, in the cultural affairs section of the budget, that funds things like special events and items like that, we had indicated that, for example, there are events that would not be held this year, for example, New Year's Eve, so in that case, that funding can be transferred to the DCAC events line item, to allow DCAC to program that funding.
So, once you take $2,600 out of that special event line item, what would be in there? What's the balance after that?
Coming out of the, because of New Year's Eve, $20,000 allocation is expected to be totally unused this year, that would still leave $17,400 in that $20,000 appropriation.
This is moving money from one area to another area, basically, I guess, yeah.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Burke, and this is actually, it's transferring from line items even within the same section of the budget, it's not coming from different departments within the same departmental allocation.
No, I just wanted to know, I knew what moving money is, I work in budgeting, but I just wanted to know the balance and the things like that, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, Ritchie?
That's another question I had.
Oh, okay. All right, any other questions, Jason, Darryl?
No, this is Jason, I mean, we're proposing taking an extra $2,600, and from somewhere, it's going to go unused, and put it to good use, so I'm for upping it to 10, if folks agree.
All right, any other comments?
Not yet, I don't want to hear anybody else.
This is Darryl, I think it's a good idea to increase it to $10,000.
All right, James, any problem with that?
No, sir, that source of funds is available, should the board decide to do that.
Somebody enter a motion that we raise it $10,000 and approve the funding.
Do you need two motions to increase it, and also to authorize it?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, and it can be either two motions, one, to put it all in the DCAC events line item, and two, to increase that total line item to 10,000, or you can make that just a compound motion to move...
Why can't you wrap them all in one?
Yes, sir.
I think that was the suggestion.
Yes.
I would move to consolidate all DC funding in the general DCAC events line item, and increase that funding from $7,400 to $10,000, using unused funds in the cultural affairs budget.
Good motion, is there a second?
Mr. Ritchie, I'll second.
Who's this, Ritchie?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Jason, seconded by Ritchie, that we approve the funds requested by the Arts Council, and increasing the amount to, how much?
$10,000.
$10,000, all right, $10,000. Take a roll.
Yes, sir. Roll call vote, we'll start with Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA.
Aye.
We'll go to Commissioner Borland, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, IRNA.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, IRNA.
Aye.
Okay.
And Mr. Town Manager, this is Eddie Mann, I've been on the line for a few minutes now, and I'll vote aye for that now, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Mann, and Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous vote on that motion.
Okay, the motion carries, and you'll take care of it, James?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's move on.
Item number 8B on the agenda, this is the mid-year bonus program. During prior fiscal years, there had been a mid-year bonus program offered to the employees in, right around the holiday time. In this case, it was intended to reward and incentivize staff for excellent performance of job duties, and by, in the middle of the year, it's enough time to assess whether the performance warrants a bonus. In prior fiscal years, it had been, the proposed bonus amount was $300, $350 per employee, and that is consistent with the last few years' levels. And that particular one, the funding for that is in the budget, however, it is considered highly appropriate for that to be discretionary of the board, not anticipated, so even though it's in the budget, I still believe it's very, very important, that the board should vote on that, should they think it's acceptable and appropriate.
James, let me ask you, is this in lieu of a Christmas bonus we used to give?
Yes, sir, we just stopped calling it the Christmas...
I'm just asking, yeah.
Yes, sir, I think it may have been called the Christmas bonus years ago, and I think it was just kind of rephrased to the, just a mid-year bonus, it's just semantics, to be honest.
Yeah, just a question.
Yes, sir.
All right, what's the feelings of the board, any comments from the board? You heard from the town manager.
This is Commissioner Collins, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, anybody else? Darryl, would you make it in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I'd most authorize the payment of the mid-year bonus of $350 to all employees.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
This is Eddie Mann, I'll second.
All right, there's a motion, seconded by Eddie Mann, that we authorize payment for a mid-year bonus for the employees of the amount of $350. Take a roll call, James.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, IRNA.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, IRNA.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous vote, sir.
Okay, you have your Christmas bonus, I guess we're done with it. Old business, James.
Yes, sir. Item number nine, old businesses, all these items are for action. Item number 9A, this is appointment of special events committee members. In this particular example, the special events committee was officially approved as an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, and in fact, it was chartered back in September. There was, of course, a good bit of outreach and recruitment, and even before then, there had been outreach, including by members of the elected body, including Mayor Protem Selby and others. We wanted to make sure to get the word out to as many members of the community as possible, and any stakeholders who might have interest in their time and talents in these events. Now, we did receive a good number of applicants, we did have a good group here, but in the time that we've been soliciting applications, we did have one or two people withdraw, one to serve on the Christmas subcommittee only, one had been elected to public office, a couple others had been appointed to serve on other committees, but yet, we are left with a very good slate of really, really nice people, and dedicated people who are appearing to serve.
All right, James, let me ask you a couple of questions. How many are we appointing tonight, or are we setting up a whole new special events committee?
Yes, sir, we're now setting it up in accordance with the revisions of the Code of Ordinances.
How many members?
Three to seven is what we're allowed.
Okay, just asking.
And I will say, if it's okay, and we may have folks listening, because we have more applicants than slots available, we want to make sure, even if a candidate's not selected this time, we would very much welcome that person to participate in special events, either via a subcommittee or other volunteer service, and in fact, some folks really do prefer to participate, say, only in the Christmas events, or one person was only on 4th of July, so we certainly would welcome their continued interest, even if NSE doesn't...
You know, this could take all night on this one, so I'm either going to suggest something, or you're going to have to narrow it down and keep from people being embarrassed, or something, James, because I don't know how many members you've got on this list, but it's quite a few. And how would you do this to come up with, has the commission decided on three members or seven members? Or five members? Wouldn't we need to do that, James?
The board, through its nominee, if the board chooses to make nominations, they can nominate up to seven, and what may happen here is, if you get more than seven nominations, then it would have to be narrowed down by a vote. But if you get less than seven and more than three, then it works itself out. But I certainly would defer to the members of the board, who've had an opportunity to see the applications and the list of names here.
Well, I've read all the applications, but I don't know but two or three of the whole people on the list, I mean, I just don't know them, I'm sorry, but I don't even know their names and who they are, and I want to be fair to them, too. So it's going to be a little bit awkward unless you come up with some suggestions to make it so everybody has an equal chance.
Kind of make a suggestion here, Commissioner Borland, you're right, I mean, it is a little bit awkward, but it is what it is, and so we all, hopefully, I mean, it's, first of all, James, and Michelle, and everyone else, we got great feedback, we got great applications, and some folks really put a lot of work into the application as well, so, I mean, everyone's probably in the same boat as me, which is to say, I can speak on a handful of these folks, you know, and I can provide that feedback and review, and kind of go around the room and see what comment we have, and then do some, see if we want to make some appointments.
I've never found this list, there's a couple people on here that had settled on this committee before. Would they be grandfathered into the new committee?
Commissioner, because this is, in effect, chartered at the September 2nd meeting, we would need to appoint folks as opposed to grandfathering. And going back to prior minutes, when there were kind of ad hoc appointments to a special events committee, that actually kind of goes back a number of years, so it would be... And going back to prior minutes, when there were kind of ad hoc appointments to a special events committee, um, that, that actually kinda goes back a number of years, so, um, it would be, I, I, and, and some of those folks chose to only work on certain special events, so, uh, that, that idea of working on a clean slate where it is now properly chartered, I think, uh, it's, it's best for us to go ahead and look at all the, look at all the candidates, um, since the prior version of this wouldn't have been, um, wouldn't have been the chartered version that we have now.
I just feel like, if you're on a special events committee, you should be able to, all this, all the events, and not be able to pick, why do you wanna be on a Christmas committee, why do you wanna be on a Halloween committee? If you're on the committee, you're on the committee. That's why-
I, I, I agree with you, uh, Ritchie.
Well, and I, I think, James, I'm glad you said this, 'cause I was, I was thinking it, but, um, you know, I hope we can provide this list to whoever is on-
Right.
-these committees, so they can proactively reach out to folks, 'cause, um, you know, you have the general special events steering committee, basically, and then maybe subcommittees for each event, you know, Christmas may have a handful of other, um, working groups they put together.
Now, the people that was previously on this special event committee, did you reach, did you reach out to them?
Uh, yes, Mayor Protem Selby, so you'll, you'll see, um, for example, um, one of the, one of the people who, who is on that committee previously is shown on the list, we also have a couple of people who previously had only worked on the Christmas subcommittee, but they understand that this is, as the commissioner mentioned earlier, uh, that this is, uh, this special events committee is intended to look at all special events, not just an individual one. And I, actually, that's why we did have one person who had applied, decided to pull, uh, withdraw, because they really preferred only to serve on the Christmas subcommittee, and, and I respect that, we're just great volunteers.
Well, I, 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 I think that they should be able to choose, um, which committee, because the Christmas committee probably will be a whole lot more work, more detailed, um, than the general, you know, than anything else, so we probably need more hands on deck for Christmas, for decorating and judging and things like that, so, I'm not with that, um, one or nothing, you know, I think they should be able to choose the project, and for instance, like, they may can do, not can do the spring, but they can in the winter, so, I, I think that should be open to a project they should, they wanna do, everybody's talents are different.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to, uh, cut you off there, I, I, I agree with that, although I think this group is, is not about each different event, you know, we're not, we're not talking about appointing the Christmas committee or the Day or Days Committee, the group that we're putting together is the special events committee, so all special events, and then they'll piece together other task force working groups, uh, that they'll work specifically on, and some of those members will be a part of those, you know, if somebody, you know, can, uh, but this, this group will be over all special events.
Uh, we haven't voted on it yet, so, I, like I said, I still think that, um, we could do a core group, like you said, of special event, and then, I think you used the term task force for different things, for different subcommittees, which is okay with me, but like I said, I don't think it should be all you to be on this whole board and do all events, or none, I don't think that's what we want to project.
Alright, comments, I haven't had any, I haven't had anything, you know, firmed up with yet, that I'm satisfied with, but, I mean, it's all signs good, really, but how you gonna narrow it to seven people, I, with, I, I don't know how many is on this list, but it's a group of them.
Well, I went through and, and took notes on, on everybody, and, and obviously, I've, um, I, I, like I said, I, I can speak to a handful, and I did some Facebook stalking, um, and checking out some other folks as well, um, and so I'll share, I, I don't wanna, you know, overtake the whole conversation, so I'm gonna, uh, share a, a handful of thoughts I had going through, um, based on what I read and the applications and folks I know. Um, the first one was Jamie Anderson, um, who owns the bookstore, and she's so active in the community, she does so much work, and, and, um, she's a huge partner to the town, um, and so I think that it, it, she's a fit, um, Dana Lizenby is someone we worked with, uh, um, she owns Coastal Blooms in, in town, and so, as a florist, kind of events are definitely in her wheelhouse, um, and I think, um, she'd be a good fit as well, um, Ruth Stetson was, uh, a, a long, passionate application, and, uh, and I think that is someone who would give a, um, a, a new, fresh perspective and, and some creative, good ideas, um, and then, you know, I had the thought between, um, folks like Tim and the Woodies, who have been around, you know, I think it's important to have some folks that, um, have, have been involved, uh, for a while, and know the, what's, how things have gone, relationships with vendors and things like that, uh, so, those were, those were some of my, my main thoughts as I went through, and I'd be, um, anxious to hear other folks' thoughts as well.
Well, um, Commissioner Borland, you don't name six people, so it's not but one more left.
I haven't put anybody up for appointment yet, I just wanted to give my, my feedback on-
But let me give you mine, um, which is good, and I think all of them excellent, I know, um, all six that you named with the exception of one, and they're all very active and excellent supporters in Tana Manio. I, I think they're business owners, too, so I'm sure they'll be affiliated with Downtown Association. Um, with that said, as I told y'all on July first, at our July first meeting, we need to be more diverse, yes, we do need the business owners, we need those that has been active in the Tana Manio, but we also need some fresh, new people as well, so that you can take that knowledge that they have in the past, and somebody new, and hey, that could be an awesome combination, but I just think we need to be more broad, and when you Facebook stock, I hope that you, you know, stock, get to know the other people that has been recommended. I have recommended two applicants, and if, if, I don't know if Jamie, you can look it up, that's been recommended for special events for over a year, over a year. Two African-American women who is very interested, they're not in the Tana Manio, but they live just a couple miles out of Tana Manio. And like I said, refer to July first, we need to be diverse, and if you don't know them, Commissioner Borland, or any other commissioner, um, let me know, I'll let you know, introduce you, 'cause they're been in Manio all their lives. So, I, I'm a little, uh, uh, I'm a little bit, uh, aggravated that they had to wait this long.
Alright, did, Betty, you said you were gonna name them?
Nicole Thrash and Denise Morris, Nisi Morris, born and raised here, their family's been here. Uh, Jamie, can you tell, uh, manager Ayers when they put their application in? Please tell me.
Yes, Mayor Protem Selby, the dates I'm showing in the spreadsheet here from the town clerk show applications received from those two candidates on January fourteenth, twenty twenty.
No, they wasn't, there was before them, it was August, it was August.
Okay.
Okay, they might be recorded then, but they were submitted in August. Of nine, twenty nine.
Uh, this Commissioner Collins, do they, do these people have to live in the Tana Manio, or?
They don't have to live in the Tana Manio, I thought the only board that you have to live in the Tana Manio, from my understanding, is the planning board, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor Protem Selby, that, that was, that's a perfect example, so we have, this particular one in the charter did not require, um, town residents as a, uh, as a qual, as a requirement.
Mm-hmm, well, Betty's right. Alright, I'm gonna tell you the truth, I'm over a barrel myself. I, I kinda agree with what Betty's saying, and I, I know Jamie Anderson, I certainly know she's very active in everything she does, and we got one here, uh, that, Tim Teepel, I don't really know him, but he's been very, very active in downtown affairs, I know that, and he, he is a participant, uh, but, uh, like I say, that's the only two, and of course, Nicole and, uh, Nisi. But I, 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 I'm really staying out of this right now, 'cause this, this, I see it as getting really touchy.
Well, it is touchy, it's, it's, it's very-
It is touchy, yeah, it's supposed to be, but-
When you try to include all parts of our community, and you only can still consistently-
Oh, Betty, I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with you, because if, if James has alluded to that they do not have a living time, so that opens them up, I mean, to serve.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that the applicant to mi, Commissioner Board, or, or in name, excellent candidate, excellent, they done put that work in the Tana Manio, I appreciate them, but we need to bring in more diversity, um, as I said before, if you, you know, you elected me for a fresh voice, you elected me to bring more diversity, and I'm not going to, um, strafen that.
Ritchie, Eddie, Darryl?
Yeah, let's go with, um, Jamie, uh, this is Rich, I'm sorry, Jamie, Tim, Nicole, Nisi, and the Woodies.
That's a compromise.
That's all the slide was, who there was up?
It could be between three and seven, right?
Yes, sir.
Who did you say again, Ritchie, I'm sorry?
He said-
This is Eddie.
I said Jamie, uh, Nisi, Nicole, Tim, and Carl Woody, Carl, you, your parents.
Yes, so that, that list would include six people.
I'll tell you, um, I had, I had on my list that I highlighted, I had, uh, I highlighted seven, and I'm not, you know, not nominating anybody, just throwing out there, too, but it's, it kinda overlaps yours, I'd highlighted, uh, Jamie Anderson, Dana Lizenby, Nisi Morris, Ruth Stetson, Tim Teepel, Nicole Thrash, and Carl Woody.
Alright, well, wouldn't we, has Ruth Stetson been mentioned yet, that'll be the seven, won't it?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, so, following Commissioner Mann's comments, the, the, the folks that I'm seeing right now that have multiple votes, or more, I'm sorry, these are not votes, I'm sorry, these are, uh, suggested names prior to a motion, but we have seven right now, that, according to my list.
Alright, you'd rate them out, James, who you, who you heard, what?
That makes, that makes it eight, because Mr. and Mrs. Woody are, are, uh, are two seven, so we've got, uh, Jamie An, we've got Ms. Anderson, Ms. Lizenby, we've got Ms. Morris, we've got Ms. Stetson, we've got Mr. Teepel, we've got Ms. Thrash, and we've got Mr. and Mrs. Woody.
Yeah, well, let me, let me ask you this, you said Mr. and Mrs. Woody, we had to include them in one, 'cause the husband-wife team, I'm all for it, 'cause they've been very active, but I mean, I'm not recommending them, of course, but, uh, you got a husband and wife, it looks to me like they could serve as one team or something, but I, I don't know, I don't know, this, this is-
This is, this is Eddie, and just my opinion about it, if you, they're kind of a package deal, so if you put one on the board, you name one, then you get both of them, really, but-
Oh, yeah, that, well, that's, that's- I thi, I think, I think any board over seven members is going Vulcan Commerce, but that's just my feeling.
He was just, uh-
James, James, didn't you just name seven, or was it eight?
Yes, sir, w- when we named eight, that didn't, that eight included, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Woody, now, and-
Yeah.
Chatting, and chatting with the, the town attorney, um, we were talking about, I mean, these are, that we, for the sake of, the sake of-
Well, let me ask you this, why can't we say Sue Woody, 'cause I'm like Eddie, she's gonna be talking to her husband, her husband's gonna be telling her what to do, a little bit, and so we get two, we get two for one, and that'll give us the seven.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and for the sake of, um, for the sake of our, our, our valued colleagues there, perhaps I might suggest, if that motion should come up, that the, the motion could mention, uh, that the outreach could be made to Mr. and Mrs. Woody, and they could designate a designated to the committee.
That would be good.
At that point, you would have seven, if you, if the motion was crafted to have the other six names, and then the last name being, uh, the designee of Mr. or Mrs. Woody as a, as a desire.
Alright, alright, as a compromise, how would the board feel about this recommendation that James just suggested?
Sounds great.
Everybody pretty well approve of that?
This is Darryl, I approve.
I do, I do, this is-
I'm, I'm, I'm trying, y'all know what I'm trying to do, this is a hell of a mess for all of us, and we gotta have, we gotta have a consensus that we're kinda in agreement and not upset with each other. It sounds pretty good to me, but I don't have a vote, it, y'all do.
And Mr. Mayor, if you would like me to just re, repeat for the, repeat for the record what I brought-
Yeah, yeah.
So, in this case, the slate of candidates would include Ms. Anderson, Ms. Lizenby, Ms. Morris, Ms. Stetson, Mr. Teepel, Ms. Thrash, and the design, and the designee of Mr. and Mrs. Woody, for a total of seven candidates for the special events committee, should that be made into a motion.
Alright.
You need a motion for this?
Yeah.
Tear it up.
I made a motion, and I made these, as stated earlier.
Alright, uh, Richie's made a motion, we accept the seven members as suggested, we're worried, we're worried that way, uh-
This is Darryl, I'll second.
Okay, good, a motion by Richie, seconded by Darryl, that we accept seven members as suggested by the commission to be on the, uh, special events committee. Uh, take a poll.
Yes, sir, uh, Mayor Protem Selby, Iron A. Uh, um, Mayor Protem Selby, Iron A.
I think you lost.
Yes, well, we'll, I'll look over to our, our IT director, and I'll, I'll continue down the list, and we'll see if we, if for some reason there was a technical glitch here, uh, next up, Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Now, we'll try one more time for Mayor Protem Selby on the line.
Aye.
Ah, she is.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous vote on the motion for the slate-
Alright, alright, uh, the, the vote is unanimous, we have our, uh, appointment, uh, to the, uh, special events committee, which will be seven members, and you will notify them, James, and you're gonna talk to, uh, the Woodies, right?
Yes, sir.
You, you handle it the way you need to, how about that?
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Alright, okay.
Next up on the agenda, this is, um, this is also old business, this is the Shallow Bag Bay dredging grant local share. Uh, as indicated at the prior meetings, the board commissioners did receive a briefing on this project as part of the budget options for initiatives. This is the, this dredging project is, um, critical to the, uh, the Marina, the Elizabeth Two, and it is connecting that area all the way out to Shallow Bag Bay and Range Five out in, and through Shallow Bag Bay to Roanoke Sound. Uh, in this case, the dredging project will improve marine travel, both commercial and recreational, as well as boating safety within town limits, which have been extended by the state legislature to include Shallow Bag Bay. Um, the importance of allowing the Elizabeth Two replica vessel to go out for critical maintenance is also important to note. Now, Deer County has been managing this important project at no cost of the Tana Manio, however, their project manager, and I've also coordinated with their county manager, reports that, um, there is a need to, uh, in accordance with state law, to, to get some local match to connect up to Range Five. Now, in this case, the, the, the preferred would be to get a fifty-foot channel to match the other areas, and to minimize the need for more current, um, and, or sooner dredging. That fifty-foot channel, though, would cost forty-three thousand local match from the town, uh, if a smaller thirty-foot channel was desired by the, by the board, that'd be twenty-six thousand. Now, the, the proposed source of funds for this, for this local match would be the unused allocation for the Manio Resident Utility Relief Fund. Uh, that particular fund of a hundred thousand dollars is projected to have at least ninety thousand dollars left over from the initial appro- That particular fund of a hundred thousand dollars is projected to have at least ninety thousand dollars left over from the initial appropriation. Dare County Project Manager and County Manager indicated a timely decision is critical to make this happen this year, as they already have a contractor arranged, but need to try and do it in this season. So it would be up to the board, however, since this was not an original appropriation, it'd be up to the board to allow the transfer of unused funds from the, from the utility, from that, that relief fund, which is going unused for either the twenty-six or forty-three thousand dollar grant match.
All right, you heard.
Let me ask you a question. The rest of the dredging is fifty feet?
Yes, sir. We understood the rest was fifty feet, and that's all been paid. Dare County has that, has that already, that funding is already in place, and the project's already going, I'm sorry, is already in place. It's just waiting for us to determine whether we can do this last little connection.
Under thirty feet?
Thirty foot, yes, yes, sir. I guess, I guess, Commissioner, the thirty foot is enough to satisfy the state requirements. However, I, I understand that it would be better to connect at the fifty feet of the others, so that it's, it wouldn't basically, it wouldn't require dredging quite as soon, and it would be consistent with the rest of the proposed work.
This is Range, what range is it?
Range Five. So on the exhibit in the staff report, it's Range Five where it's out there, and where we connect up to the main channel in, in Roanoke Sound.
Well, wouldn't that allow the basin to be cleaned out up to the Elizabeth Two, which is where, where we have most of our dockage for the big boats?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is correct.
Yeah. In other words, the boats that can't get in here now is bumping bottom, and it'll open them up for better usage of our own properties in the waterfront. Because some of the boats can't come in here because they're too, they're not deep enough draft. I mean, they are too deep draft.
And Elizabeth Two is in that same situation.
Yeah, well, that's what, Darrell, that's what it's being done for, really.
Yeah. And they need, they need to get it out of here so they can do some rehab on it.
That's right. You're right. You're right, Darrell.
This is Eddie, man. Fifty-foot channel.
I, I didn't hear that.
I think, I think we should go ahead and conform with the, the rest of them and do the fifty-foot deep channel.
Yeah, I think so too. I, I'd be for it, but I don't have a vote.
This is Eddie, man. I agree with Darrell. I think it needs to be fifty foot, because the first storm we get, it's gonna narrow up and narrow up.
Yeah, it'll be thirty fast. Jason?
Jason, how much money do we have in the utility relief fund? Do we have enough money for that forty-two, forty-three thousand?
Yes, yes, sir. We had identified in that fund that we would need less than ten thousand out of the hundred, a hundred thousand appropriation, because we looked at the, the, the one approved application and the one that has come in. And then even if you take the maximum number of accounts who had been passed due, we wouldn't even exceed ten thousand. So that remains, that means we have got ninety thousand remaining that we could be transferred.
I think we should go ahead and do it.
All right. Darrell, would you make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the fifty-foot dredging of the, what, fifty-foot dredging at the cost of forty-three thousand dollars from the Manio Utility Relief Fund.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Jason.
All right, Jason. All right, the motion by Darrell, seconded by Jason, we allocate the money presented by the town manager for the dredging of Shallow Bag Bay at fifty foot. Take a poll, James.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, Ironay.
Aye.
Your mayor, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Ironay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, you have unanimous vote for that motion.
Okay, we have a unanimous vote. We, it's been passed and approved, and we're on go, going to see.
Yes, sir. Item number nine C. This is the Declared Emergency Bonus Program. This is a partic- this is a particular topic that had been brought up a couple of times by, by members, members of the Board of Commissioners, who had indicated interest in providing a bonus to employees to recognize their service during the declared emergency pandemic. In the staff, in the staff report, we did, we did acknowledge it to be a declared emergency. And, but we're, our responses in accordance with our incident action plan, so, but all departments have been involved in the response and continue to do that. All work has been performed without interruption, even when we had a recent COVID-related disruption in town hall. All services continued unabated. This particular item was brought up by members of the Board of Commissioners. I was asked to bring it up again, but in all transparency to the public, it is, it is being shown on agenda. It is a separate item from that mid-year bonus that the board already approved. So I wanted to make sure this is shown as a separate item in all transparency. And also, it was not appro- it was not appropriation in the original budget, because it wasn't anticipated at that time. So in this particular case, the, the, one of the award, the, the award level that had been initially recommended by a board member was the five hundred dollar bonus level, and the cost for that would be twenty thousand, four hundred dollars, including all the applicable payroll deductions. Even after the forty-three thousand that was just appropriated for, out of the, out of the utility relief fund, out of the unused ninety thousand, both that forty-three thousand allocation and this twenty thousand, four hundred dollar allocation would still leave available funding there. So should the board decide to proceed, I want to make sure it's very clear what the cost was, where the source of funds were, and what the value of the award would be.
All right, what is the feeling of the board? Any comments or any, where we go with it?
Is this an emergency? What's the title of this money for five hundred dollars?
Yes, Mayor Protem Selby. It's being called the Declared Emergency Bonus Program. To make it clear that this particular program, as it was, it was, I think the, the board member that originally brought this up talked about it being kind of a COVID bonus, but I almost, I will say to call it that. But to be clear with the public, it's while, this is while we're in a declared state of emergency due to COVID-nineteen. So I just thought this was a better title than calling it the COVID Program.
Did the town receive any COVID funds or any, or salary or anything like that?
Yes, Mayor Protem Selby. The town did get an allocation of approximately, approximately twenty-six thousand dollars from Dare County via the Federal Cares Act. However, that could not be used for a program like this. It was actually used for our, our law enforcement officers in accordance with the guidance from the feds. So in that particular case, that, that funding that we got in, and we, we had accepted as a board, we, we did an agreement with Dare County to accept that fund that went to law enforcement.
And this would be a bonus for all employees, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I think we should reward the employees for working in such a dangerous working environment in that situation, when state emergency was issued by the state. I think we should, we should give them a bonus for that.
James, would this bonus program be administered to all the employees, or one, one employee, or a few employees singled out, or how, or what?
Yes, sir. All employees, and that would be full-time.
Okay, okay. I agree with that. I agree with Darrell on that, because I'd be opposed to single out one person getting the bonus, and the other's not getting it.
Now, for part-time employees, would that be a per-rated of five hundred?
No, ma'am. It was, it would, the, the proposal that I understood, when it was first brought up by the members of the board, was it was intended for all employees. I, I would point out that our, that our part-time, that our part-time employees who work for the town, we've got, we've got a few. We, one of them, one of them was instrumental in writing, actually writing our incident action plan as responsible for emergency operations. Another one is in law enforcement, has, and has performed work during this time. And another one is our building inspector, who continued to provide services and inspecting and helping keep our construction industry going. So I think all of them have worked during this time and have made significant contributions.
So the question, the answer is all employees, doesn't matter if they're full or part-time, which is fine, yeah. I, I just wanted to know.
All right, can we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. This is Richie.
Okay. Is there a second to Richie's motion? I'm not gonna word it.
Yes, Darrell, I second Richie's motion for the five hundred dollar bonus, for the emergency, the declared emergency bonus, five hundred dollars.
Got a motion, a second, in regards to emergency bonus program. Take a poll, James.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, Ironay.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, Ironay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, you voted unanimous for the motion.
Okay, we'll declare a motion passed. All right. Mayor comments. I only have one question, James, and it's to you. Should we, or are we, or should we leave it alone for the time being? We're getting, we're not getting ahead ourselves on transitional housing, or affordable housing, or some type of other housing. But how are we gonna handle this? Do we need a committee eventually? Have a housing committee or something of that nature, or just let you handle it? I mean, I am, I'm not objectionable to just letting you handle it, but I, we're, we're gonna have some guidance somewhere to put it all in one direction if we're going forward.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So we, we do have a couple of different options on this. Of course, I've been keeping in close contact, including this past week, with the county manager, because their particular project seems to be moving forward most quickly, and they've accelerated it by hiring design professionals to work on that. So what I'd love to do is to bring back to the board at their December meeting, update on that and some suggestions as to some.
Okay. You, you've answered my question. I think that's good. Just we need, we need to get a sense of direction more than anything else, and don't be rushing into it. So I, I personally think that you ought to handle it for the time being. That's just my suggestion. That's just my comments, and that's all they are from the mayor. All right, let's. Eddie, take off.
I'm sorry for being late. I apologize. But I want to thank everybody for putting in for the Special Events Committee, and us putting ourselves out there. I want to thank them all for, for doing that. And thank you to the town employees for keeping up the good work. That's it.
Okay, Richie?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Jason?
I think I'm good tonight.
Okay. Christine, she never came on, did she? No. Darrell? Oh.
I'm good, man. I'm good.
Betty?
All my wanted just to say is I looked at, that's why I didn't answer the, while ago I went silent. I was looking to check those applications, and the applications are dated. My apologies to you, manager heirs. My first initial meeting with Nisi and Nicole was in August of two thousand nineteen. So still, I do want to say you are correct, and I'm sorry, go on record for that. But the application was submitted July, I mean, January of twenty twenty. All far as the task force or the communications with the county about affordable housing, I, I would like to have updates on that and see where we're going at with that affordable housing.
All right. James, you'll keep Betty informed totally, won't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Betty, we're all human. I make mistakes every day. All right. Anything else coming for the board? All right, we've got a workshop. Y'all, when is it, James?
Yes, sir. That would be five o'clock on November eighteenth, twenty twenty.
November eighteenth, five o'clock. All right. Anything else coming for the board? Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving recess this meeting until November.
Oh, I'm sorry, recess, yes. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Jason, was that you?
Yeah, well, yep, I, I moved to recess until November eighteenth, five P.M.
Yeah, is there a second?
Yes, Darrell, I second.
All right, a motion by Jason, seconded by Darrell, that we recess until November the eighteenth, five o'clock to the workshop meeting. All right. Can we have a motion on that, James?
Yes, sir. And if it's all right, I can go ahead and call the roll call.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, Ironay.
Aye.
And Commissioner.
All right. Go ahead. Darrell?
Aye.
All right, we stand recess until November the eighteenth. All right, see y'all then. Take care.